Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. And today is February the twentieth, February the fourth, twenty twenty. Time is now six P M. Regular meeting of the city council, the city Trinidad will welcome to order. Do we have any rule call please?
Goodell?
Here.
Griggo?
Here.
Matey?
Here.
Ogultry?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Rico?
Here. I approve of the agenda. Do we have any change to the agenda? The council lot's considered. Doc could have a motion please. Second?
Second.
Call vote please.
Goodell?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Matey?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item three, policy items and staff reports. We have a five-year official local crime report. Chief Gloriosa, are you here?
So I placed them at your tables, the crime stats that we have for, this is just a brief summary of the crime stats. The tenure, the full tenure summary will be, it's almost, it was, actually Kim had it done today, but I didn't have enough time to get it to you folks. But this is what I've shared with you in our neighborhood watch meeting last week. Excuse my voice. So if you can see, those are neighbor reports, and what I do is I compare them for the last five years, and across the board, we're downed. Everything is decreased except for the serious assault and of course, the calls for service. That's that first page. The second pages are, that's actually off the CBI website. Those are the other cities comparable to our size, and I went all the way down to Platteville, which is, let's see, they're three thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven, so, and it's their crime picture as well, so it kind of shows comparison to the other jurisdictions out there. One thing I'll say about that is Trinidad has been reporting since 1990s. I remember back in the day when we actually did it on paper and pencil. A lot of the cities don't report a full report, some don't report at all. Now that's going to change in twenty twenty-one, because now it's going to be mandated, mandated to this, to the extent where if you want to apply for a grant, you have to have those stats in. My question about what other cities report is like, if you lose the bar, you know, they're comparable to our size. They're reporting sixty-eight crimes. Now, you know, I don't know what sixty-eight crimes they're reporting, because to me, that's very little. We're, so, I mean, that'd be a good place to be, chief of police, I guess. But, so that can't be the entire, the entire window. Now, when Trinidad reports a crime, it's done through our CAD system, our MS system. It's not done manually anymore. So as soon as a report is generated, and an officer types in the report, those numbers automatically populate to that neighbor's report. So it's automatic, it's not like I have to do anything extra to get that to happen. Another thing that's changed since, and I can't remember if it was two thousand twelve or two thousand fourteen, before that date, we only were required to list the top crime. So say, if you had an incident where you went, and there was a robbery, a homicide, and a vehicle theft, you would just put the homicide. Those other crimes weren't counted. So it kind of skewed the numbers from there, from two thousand twelve or two thousand fourteen going forward, because now all those crimes are reported and populated into our crime report. Robbery is the one that everybody keep, is worried and upset about, including myself. If you look at the two thousand nineteen, we have nine. Of those nine, four were done with arrests. The two that stick out are the robberies of the Power Credit Union. Those have not been solved, but we're still working with the FBI in trying to work and get that resolved. But you can see, we were successful in several of the others. The most too recent now, in two thousand twenty, we got some good evidence of them, and I'm hoping that, I put a rush on it, I'm hoping we get some good results coming back. So those are looking promising as well. The last page is our, is our, is our staff, and I just want you to take a look at that. We're twenty-seven sworn personnel, and that includes the three that city council gave me last year. Those three are currently in the academy. I've got three that are currently on the FTO, and I got two that are on injury leave. So we're not to that twenty-seven officers as of yet. The windows looking, or the picture's looking better. The academies, I got one individual, Angela Hana, he is in a sixteen-week academy, will be done spring, and then I got two other individuals at Adams County, and there's a twenty-one-week academy, and they'll be done early summer. So that picture's going to look better as time goes on. But, you know, there's a lot of misnumbers out there about the crime stats and where we are. These are accurate numbers. I've been questioned as to the homicide, why it's not listed there, is because it will be, it will show up in twenty twenty. That's where you'll see the one word that we had most recently.
Questions from councils, from day?
My compliments, chief, thank you. Having worn that for forty-one years, I understand that statistics can be made to say anything that you want.
Exactly.
However, I understand the reporting that you talk about, that was part of my role for the long quarter. And I realize that we are asking you to do a massive job with limited resources, and because of some of the situations we have with our police officers frequently looking for leaner pastures, better pay and that sort of stuff, become a trained guy, we have a high turnover, so it's difficult to get any traction. All of that having been said, I commend you and your department for the efforts that you do do, the things that you, the success that you do have, and until, I can be clearly demonstrated the contrary, I will endorse you to, I will charge hell with a thimble of water for you.
Well, you know, and I appreciate it, and on that note about the officers and trying to keep them, Mike and I and Donna, other, we're working on that, towards that, to try to get it, and I gave this comparison even at our neighborhood watch meeting the other day. You know, I lost a officer that had seven years' experience. That officer, the city had invested quite a bit of money in. You know, we had sent him to training, he had the years' experience of being a Trinidad police officer, which is different, honestly. It's, the officers that we send to other cities, they promote very quickly, because they do a little bit of everything. But if we could give the officers, say, four percent for every four years they're here, that's a small bonus, but yet it's at least giving them something that, look, we appreciate and we acknowledge that having a person that has those seven years' experience is going to be a lot more valuable to our community and our department than that new person coming in. I'm not knocking the new guy, I'm just saying, he doesn't have the experience or the time that we invested in him to get him trained up where they need to be. So I really want to see that happen. Now, you cap those, you know, you cap them at officer, you cap them at corporal, you cap them at sergeant, all the way up to board to chief, to where you're seeing an increase as those people are staying here and we're vested in them. We're appreciating what they're doing and that they're staying. So that's something we need to do as a city to have happen. If you go on the website and you look at departments that are competing for officers, we're still one of the very bottom. I sent over an email to Mike and Donna here just recently, and when you're competing against those other agencies to get, to attract the good officers, because I'm still going to be picky, to attract the good officers, I'm behind the eight ball, because I just, I'm not as competitive salary-wise as some of those other agencies. So yeah, that is something we need to do. Other proactive things we're doing is the neighborhood watch, we had a very good turnout last Wednesday night, we had probably close to fifty people. At the end of the meeting, I asked for people that were willing to be captains, raise their hand, and I saw about a dozen people raise their hand. I'm hoping that happens. Being short-staffed as we are, as you can see, we need those, we need those people in the communities to step up. We need those individuals that know their neighborhoods, that know when things don't belong there, to be able to call the police department. Also, another thing that we're doing here at the end of this month is the business watch. It's the same program, other than it now focuses on the business watch, and I hold that, and I believe it's the twenty-sixth of this month. Those are two proactive steps to get the community more involved and to help us patrol our city. We heard a lot the other night at the meeting, you know, we don't call because we don't want to bother, we need the calls. And it's been proven, the more calls we get, the more effective we are in combating crime.
So, Ms. Griggo?
Chief, let me ask you a question. When you say calls for service here, so sometimes down in downtown, when we're working downtown, you see somebody that's not well, or seems like they're not doing well, so we call the PD to come and pick them up. Is that included in anything, any call that you mean?
Anything that is populated to a citizen's complaint, an officer contact, those are all calls for service.
Accidents as well?
Accidents, everything. That is, so that's the, that's the entire crime picture that comes into our dispatch, anything, even dog complaints, those are, those are, and you can see the numbers are down on that a little bit, and I attribute that to, the officers are, we're, we're kind of reactive right now, just based on our staffing. I'm not doing as much proactive as I'd like to do. So once we can get up to staff, we can do a lot more proactive stuff, instead of reactive. We're going call to call.
Lost my train of thought, but I'll pick it up in a minute here. But, you know, when you talk, I agree with councilman Matey, you know, numbers, anybody knows it, you can change the numbers in here, but that's one point. What I'm getting at is, from two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen, I believe we've had an increase in population. Absolutely, we've had an increase of action downtown, even though there are people that probably live outside the boundaries of Trinidad, I see it in, the traffic is doubled, and I think we have to take that into consideration when we look at these two.
I agree, I mean, you could go into restaurants to be able to know probably ninety percent of the people, and I'm looking if I know, you know, a third of those people anymore, so.
But, you know, I know, we're striving, we're not, we're not being complacent, either on your side or our side, because last year, I know, the city spent a lot of money upgrading your equipment, and upgrading weapons and things like that, so, you know, we're in it together, and I do commend the job. I have had several times tried to call, had to call the police department for things going on in neighborhoods in town, and I always get a quick response.
Right. Well, you know, at our community meeting that night too, we had a couple of people say, well, I called in and this is what happened. We need accountability as well. I want to be accountable to you, and I want to be accountable to the city, so when a call's don't go right, if I don't know about them, I can't fix them. So if a citizen gets a call for service, and they don't feel the officer did a diligent job or did enough, they need to call, they need to call in. I got a couple of things I could do, I'd go back and check body cam, I'd go back and check, see what they did. We want to keep everybody accountable, we want to make sure we're doing our job too, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Shu?
Yeah. My question, couple, I have a couple of questions, but the most important one is, what are we doing for the drug issue? Because it seems like everybody is concerned about that. You find needles everywhere, we do stuff, we had a gentleman here last week said that in front of his place, he's watching drug dealing and stuff like that. So is there something we could do when we have a camera and observe, or you need officer or investigation? I mean, I understand that, I don't have a lot of guys to do that, but that seems to be, you know, a really big issue, I, I.
So we have been successful in some of our drug arrests last year, obviously, we could do more. Erin can probably attest to this, because she sits on the board with me, the community has really stepped up, and we're going forward as far as attacking it, just not from a law enforcement side, but a prevention side, an education side, a treatment side. So as a community, we're really doing a lot to.
Not to interrupt, you said treatment, do we have funds for a treatment or a program or anything?
So there are three programs actually that are going to come up and start, and this is all from our task force that we started years ago. But this summer, we got a breath of fresh air and a bunch of new faces in there, and kind of regenerated to where we're going to even try to be a, what's the word I'm looking for? So we could apply for grants.
Final one?
Yes, thank you. We're in the process of getting that done now, and we actually have a board of directors, which I am a member of as well, that, you know, we're moving forward with that. But yes, cameras are one way, and we do have some cameras that we use for surveillance and such like that. When something like that happens, they need to call us, because we could possibly get there and interrupt that drug deal, if it's truly a drug deal, and get an arrest. Again, it needs to be a call for service.
Yeah.
There even, I'd want to do like a needle exchange kind of thing, that has been successful in, you know, to help with that. Well, you know, I.
I don't under, yeah, I don't understand why, you know, we're giving people's needles and stuff like, it just seems kind of, you know.
Well, I think what, I think what they saw with that is they don't see the needles thrown all over, because then the people are.
But they still do it here.
Well, but we haven't done that yet, that's one of the things that we're trying to work towards to make that happen.
And then the other question is, and I mean, I'm just, I don't know if there's anything, last week, when we were over here, like you should get you, a guy came out of the back of the library and was going spastic, throwing his clothes everywhere, throwing shoes, everything, and we, I called the police, and they came right away, and they had a really difficult time with him, trying to get him in the police car and everything, and I heard he did some other stuff when he was in the police car. And a few days later, he's back down there with a crowbar, swinging it all over the street and fighting with other guys. I mean, what can we do about putting those guys away where it's safe for them and safe for the community?
Okay, so, so, I'm one, I'm one faction of the solution. I mean, we can make the arrest, but the individual is going to be able to, after it's over up, post-bond or get released. We have to work strongly with the district attorney's office to try to get stiffer sentences, where, so maybe they get locked away or maybe get something, but.
And I'm sorry, if you don't mind, you can't, you can't incarcerate to just like isolate from society. And also, they're not, if he is detoxing or whatever is going on, probably not getting mental health counseling, might even be the reason why he's homeless, I don't mean to go off on that broad, you know, discussion, but we're very limited in terms of what we can do, and you can't just like incarcerate someone because they're, they're kind of, you know, for lack of a better term, going crazy outside the library. The jail is not the place for them to go, maybe temporarily, maybe to get them away from the situation, but you can't keep them there for very long. I'm sorry for.
That's okay. You know, I will give a comment on that, you could see that destruction of property, we had a hundred thirteen crimes, if you remember that big spree we had where they broke all the windows. We had three juveniles that were responsible for that, and we just got a warrant on those last week, but it was kind of a struggle to get my last two warrants. But, you know, again, I'm just one part of the puzzle. We need, we need to get, we need to prepare good cases, and if we don't prepare good cases, they need to push it back and tell us what they need to prepare the good cases, and then once they're there, we hopefully get a good prosecution on it.
No, and I, I don't have any core theoretical, please, pardon, you guys are doing a really good job. I was a cop, and I know how hard it is, it's difficult to prevent crime, because it's going to happen, and we can't always be in the same place at one time, so, like I say, I think you guys are doing a good job, there's just a few things, maybe like you say with the community and the watch neighborhood, we can get that straightened out.
So I have always been a strong advocate of those two programs. You know, it kind of, when I had a big turnover in the upper staff of my department, some of that kind of got put to the side for a little bit, but we're picking that right back up, and I think if we are successful in those two programs, we'll definitely see our crime rate come down.
Yeah, thank you, Charlie, it's all you guys do.
I share your enthusiasm and excitement about the partnership for a drug-free community and that you're going to have some social support for the work that you're doing. I had a couple of questions for you though. On the five-year local crime summary, I don't notice that there's an analysis of how drug crimes are either going up or down, or.
Okay, so I, you will get that full tenure report, but if you go to page, well, I shouldn't have to, but it's one, two, fourth page back, it's got, it broke down by arrest, the number of crimes and the percentage of crimes that that was to the total percent. Drug violations is on there, there's thirty-two crimes, that's four point three, two percent of the total crime picture, so.
And what did that entail? Excuse me, I have a drug.
So that could be anything from something where we did surveillance and we make an arrest, we have one house that we took down three times this last year, the same house. So, or it could be something as, you go, you arrest a guy and he's got product on him, and he's charged with possession of that, so possession to distribution of the drug.
And what kind of conviction rate are you getting for the arrest, or are you seeing effectiveness at the DA's office, or?
I know I don't have that with me, but that's something that we need to explore as well to see what's happening on the tail end. I'm still holding out on the, we have three drug houses that we took down, including the one that we took down three times. I'm waiting to see what's going to happen with those now, and they're still going through the process.
Ms., do you have any information on that?
I will tell you that in the case of like simple possession or things of that nature, especially for somebody that doesn't have much of a criminal record, the DA's inclination is to be lenient with people like that, and give them, charge them with a drug felony, and usually dispose of it with something like a deferred judgment, and give them a chance on probation, frequently put them in drug court, and in hope that they are able to avail themselves of that kind of program. So I think the felony convictions are probably way up, especially during the tenure of this DA. But I don't know that either, I just know their inclination is to be lenient with people in their, you know, first sign into the system, especially if it's only like simple possession or something of that nature, and then incrementally kind of ratchet up the punishment, the more the person comes back into the system, or the more serious the allegation is, if it's, you know, distribution or something of that nature, then they always try to get a felony conviction, is my understanding.
Excuse me, do you think there's a good feedback loop for, for your department from the DA's office about the evidence that you guys are presenting?
So, I would prefer, Henry, who lives here in our county, I think that would be more helpful, you know, that's, that's his choice, but we do as well as we can with the staff we have here.
Ms. Goodell?
So we were in Denver.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks already. And the, and the main meeting that I asked for while we were out there, besides testifying on the peak money and other stuff, was with the attorney general's office, and I know it's a struggle for us with the lack of mental health, and a place for people to go with drug problems, and I know that is, it puts a lot on your police department. And so we're working on that, we added police officers, first time in so many years. I was telling you earlier about new legislation being introduced for scholarship for peace officers, and it'll be state-funded for rural Colorado, I mean, we need to look at our budget to add more officers if that's the case. We got an issue here, I like what you're doing with Crime Watch and the stuff like that, people have got to start calling and reporting. I know we can ask the people constantly to be patient, we're working on it. People want results, we're driven by results, you know, keep up the good work, and we're trying to give you the tools you need, Charlie, I hope, I hope that's helpful.
So, you know, it was, it was, I've been chief for twenty years, this is the first time I had an increase in staff, and it's a tremendous help to get those extra boots on the ground. It's just, we're not going to see that in twenty. It's going to be summer, fall, before those people are actually effectively in a car or detected, whatever it is, that I'm using those, why, it just takes so much time, and that goes to the argument again, we invest so much into an officer to get him where we need him to be, we need to hold on to him or her after we got him.
Ms.?
Chief Gloriosa, thank you for being here tonight, thank you for your service. I know this, it takes a special person to be able to be in law enforcement, it's not a job, but should be taken lightly, so I appreciate that. I had several questions here. What is an estimate on your part for how much money it takes, wages, cost of the academy to bring a person from green to graduated from academy?
Okay, so the academy costs anywhere between sixteen to twenty thousand, depending on which academy I can get them into. On top of that, you've got the sixteen to twenty-one weeks of salary that we're paying them, so twenty thousand plus, what did we figure the twenty-one weeks worth on? It's, it's another chunk, it's about twenty-four thousand, so, so almost fifty thousand dollars by the time you're all said and done and you've got that officer, fresh out of the academy.
Right. And then I imagine some of the equipment you're going to have for the officer, but some is going to have to be purchased, is there additional cost to bring him online equipment-wise?
Exactly, we have to, we completely outfit him. So you're looking at a complete uniform, vest, the car, he's going to have to have a car, so it's costly to put another officer on the street.
And then, at, at that point, in jobs I've been in, when you have a new guy, sometimes, and no disrespect to the new guy at all, everyone's glad to have him, but there's a period of time where a new guy actually is not a contributor, but in effect, he's actually slowing the process down, because after receive training, get up to speed on the ground they're in, how long is that process?
So, so I've been here thirty years, and I'm still learning, it's, it's every day you learn something, there's something new, but obviously, when you have a man or a woman straight out of the academy versus a person that's been here seven years, there's a huge learning curve there. I mean, they lean heavily on the staff that we have that have a little bit more experience, so it's, it's a big disadvantage when you're comparing a fresh out of the academy officer versus someone that's got five-plus years. So I would say, before a person starts getting comfortable, and trust me, I'm still uncomfortable, you're going to have five years before, before that person is someone that is going to know Trinidad. Trinidad is a different place to patrol, you could ask the individuals that left here and gone to other cities. You know, they, everybody that we promote out of here, they all do really well really quick, because you have to do everything here. You do everything from taking the crime, to getting the warrants, to doing the forty-one ones, to doing the affidavit, our officers are all wanted and do it all. So it, but it takes some time to get them where they're proficient in doing that.
So, I mean, obviously, the investment for the city of Trinidad, money-wise is big, it's, it's big for the police department training, has it been looked at to make any contract that would benefit the police department as well as the police officer?
Right.
So that he would provide a certain number of years of service before he could?
So we just did that again this year. We had it in place at one time, we got away from it, I don't remember which attorney it was it last, but there was another attorney that thought it wasn't, the first time we had someone challenge it, they just said, they threw their hands up here and said, no, just go ahead and go, they didn't want to fight it. But we have implemented a contract where they have to stay with me for four years, and they get a quarter, a quarter each year to where the, to where it's at, met at the end of the fourth year. So hopefully, that gives me at least four years with the individual.
Is your expectation then that that'll be beneficial?
Well, you know, myself, I would honor a contract, I mean, if I was hired, I would say, absolutely, I'm going to hire that contract. So that's another argument for my, after that four years, let's throw another four percent at them. You know, if they're thinking about going somewhere else, let's sweeten the pot, let's make it well, okay, you're wanting to go, but now you hit that four-year mark, now you get a bonus.
Then, Councilman Ogultry mentioned about a process of a feedback loop between the police department and the district attorney is, and I don't know this, I'm, I don't have much experience with law enforcement, but is there any ways or any examples of that sort of process elsewhere being formalized to a point that it's predictable and can expect to see an increased rate of good cases?
So I think, I think we're, we've seen an increased rate of good cases since our new district attorney, he's held us at a higher standard. It's, it's often, if they get a case that they're not happy with, they'll kick it back and ask for more work.
So that's another argument for my, after that four years, let's throw another four percent out of. You know, if they're thinking about going somewhere else, let's sweeten the pot, let's make it well, okay, you're wanting to go, but now you hit that four-year mark, now you get a bonus.
Then, um, uh, Councilman Ogletree mentioned about, um, a process of a feedback loop between the police department and the district attorney is, and I, I don't know this, I'm, uh, I don't have a, much experience with law enforcement, but is there any ways or any examples of that sort of process elsewhere being formalized to a point that it's, it's predictable and, and can, um, expect to see, uh, an increased rate of, um, good cases?
So I think, I think we're, we're, we've seen an increased rate of good cases since our new district attorney, he's held us at a higher standard. It's, it's, it's often if they get a case that they're not happy with, they'll kick it back and ask for more work before they'll give us their arrest warrant. So, um, with that being said, uh, since Henry's taken over, I think we've, we've done better, uh, doing that. But, you know, there's always room for improvement, there's always ways to make better cases and get.
So the, the feedback loop isn't formalized, but it's sort of case by case?
So, yeah, so if an officer takes over a warrant, they feel it's not, it's not good enough, they say, well, you know, um, I, I want this much more work done, I want, I want this loop closed, I want that loop closed, we go back, we do a little more investigation, we take it back. We don't give up, we give them, try to give them what they want to get a good case. So there is that feedback back and forth as, that's not a strong enough case, this is a good case. Uh, we, we lean on them heavily to make sure we got good cases.
I have no more questions. Any other questions before we move on? I have, I'll finish.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, you, go ahead. Well, I have s- some comments, more than my questions. Civil order begins with personal responsibility. Individuals police themselves, basically. Society has a duty to police itself, except the police departments are hired and paid to help them do just that. Through a myriad of situations, they make response, they make reactive decisions, reactive responses, and sometimes they try and be proactive, community policing projects. And projects like Neighborhood Watch and Business Watch and, and those sorts of things that try and encourage citizens to police themselves. There are sometimes, from my experience, multi-generational families involved in crimes. When I was working, there were times where I was arresting three generations of the same family, doing the same stuff. And that was a societal issue. They got locked into a situation where there maybe wasn't a whole lot of alternative for them. I think that what we need is from citizens, more support and endorsement of the police department. The police department can't be everywhere, they're expected to go anywhere, they'll go down to dark alleys if nobody else wants to. But what citizens can be are the eyes and ears of the police. So that they get good information, that they feed the police and serve as good witnesses to help the police do their job. Rather than, we have, um, we need more, more support and less unsubstantiated criticism of what isn't, and is and isn't being done from the police department. I think that the police department is trying to be proactive in the efforts that they do. And I think it's also important to realize that judicial system is a chain. And as you know, a chain is only as strong as the weakest link. And the thing is, the police department, in my opinion, is not the weakest link. There where the pavement, where the tires are painted, they're doing things, they're making decisions, shoot, don't shoot, kinds of situations. Most recently, and over the past year or two, the chief won't say it, but I will, the district attorney's office has been politicized. I remember at one point when we had a convention, I suggested and endorsed that we, as the city, through some of our marijuana money, give the district attorney several thousand dollars, twenty-five or fifty?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, to help them have a bridge over what they were trying to accomplish. Egg on my face, as soon as that got, came to fruition, it was, we're not gonna prosecute certain crimes. Those miniscule kind of crimes that just really upset us, broken windows, that kind of stuff. I said, what's this, we gave you money and now you're saying you're not gonna prosecute the minor, what you call minor crimes from the police department? So it's important to recognize, I think, as we have the chief standing before us, there's a lot of contributing factors. There's a societal mentality, you know, do lives matter too? And for the longest time, wearing a uniform was nothing more than a target. When I started in seventy-seven, officer presence, wearing that uniform and with the, standing behind that badge, was probably fifty percent of the battle in terms of enforcement. Verbal direction, got compliance. Now cops, they gotta fight their way into it out of, many more situations that are absolutely unnecessary. By young and more, more brazen, um, criminals. And that's just not, you make a good point when you say it's a difficult task. It is, it's like teaching school, you do it not for the money. Okay, but, but I, I'll get off my soapbox here in just a bit, there are a lot of things and the police department is only one part of it. And my, I believe our roles are to support those efforts to ensure that we have civil order and, um, for good society. And I'm done, thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more quick question.
Go down the line first.
Is there anything that you need from the city to improve your efficacy?
So we, we got, we got a lot last year, uh, you know, uh, we, we got, for the first time, my officers were mine, their own SWAT equipment. Uh, Mike came over after one of our drug raids and saw the hodgepodge of stuff that we had together and we came over, we presented it to the E.T. Denton Council. We got, we got brand new stuff for our SWAT members, which is critical, they have to have it. We got rifles, we got officers. I better mention this, or if I go back to work tomorrow, they'll probably hang me. Those two community service officers have been a tremendous asset, that's why I'm able to get these other programs up and going. The, the, the two programs that I mentioned, not to mention the other stuff that we do, the shop with the cop, the downtown treatment, the national out, those, those are things now that I'm not using sworn personnel to do and they're taking some of the smaller stuff off the officers so they can stay on the streets. So the, that's been a big thank you to the staff and to you guys for letting that happen. Uh, I saw it working in another city and I thought, why not here, and it's been, been very beneficial. So I, I think for, there's a light at the tunnel, we just gotta get those bodies on the street in the cars.
I did have the opportunity and, and really had a good time doing it, attending the Citizens Academy. And I encourage not only other council members, but people from the public to go. Um, it's a neat, uh, experience to go through some training with the police department. And then when there's events in Trinidad, um, they fill in nicely with the officers to help with different stuff. So I do encourage, uh, not only council, but anyone that wishes to attend the Citizens Academy to get on board with that and attend. It gives you an insight into what the police officers are doing.
Uh, please forgive the ignorance on this, what's the delineation between simple and serious assault?
Uh, the, the, whether a weapon is used and the degree of injury.
So any weapon at all would constitute serious?
Uh, well, yes, and then if it has a, a serious injury, it would be serious as well.
So you could inflict serious assault with, with that?
Yes.
It's also misdemeanor versus bodily assault.
Oh.
Without a weapon or serious bodily injuries, a third degree assault, class one misdemeanor, anything above that is generally an F four and above.
Yeah, questions I have, just out of curiosity, uh, I don't know if some of the feedback that we're getting from the citizens and other things that they're talking about Trinidad solely as far as crime statistics, or are they looking at, uh, Los Angeles County? Do you have any information that you can get for us as to what the Los Angeles County, what they're reporting on?
It's on the, it's right here, it's on the end there.
Okay.
Now, Los Angeles County's been the one that had just started reporting again.
We'll look at that then.
Yeah, there's.
The, uh, out of curiosity, and last you might answer this. When somebody's picked up, like you mentioned, somebody was swinging around, they're swinging a pro bar and then a few days later he's out and then he's doing the same thing. Is there a timeframe or time, or a period of time that the detox can hold these people or get evaluated?
Well, detox is, is easier for alcohol. Because when a person goes into detox for alcohol, they, excuse me, when they go in, they are given a presumptive breath test. And if they tested all positive for alcohol, they keep them until they blow triple zeros. So on alcohol, it's, it's easier. Um, a blood test, if they're, they're going to take one, the results of a blood test take a while to come back, there were tests also. So it's harder to know if somebody is detoxing from, um, a, a drug, what kind of drug it might be and, and what their levels are and when they're sober. So I, I think it, it varies in terms of what the policies are for any kind of, of detox, uh, program at, say, crossroads for, for drugs. You agree with that, chief?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just hard to know what they may be detoxing from, what their levels are. And when they appear safe, when they appear they have come down and detoxified, they may be okay, they may not. I know that's not a very good answer to your question, ma'am, I'm sorry.
The other thing is, I, I know that this is back in the nineties, uh, I think that was when President Clinton was in office that he talked about that three times you're in, um, thing, I think that was.
For a peer offender, yeah.
And you mentioned that you have, you know, one house that you took down three times last year, is that?
So there.
Were they still in place?
Those have to be convictions though, they have to, not just the charge, but a conviction.
Okay.
So hopefully, hopefully we get three convictions.
So you're still working on the.
Yes.
What's more important to you at this point in time, more officers or better pay for the officers?
So I, I think with what we added last year, gotta be, gotta be a good start. Um, now we just need to keep those officers for, with better pay. So, I mean, I, I don't wanna ever subtract the number of people that has already been given to me. But now we need to get the pay up to where we can keep the experienced officers around.
So you're saying better pay at this point?
Better pay with what you've given me now, okay, I don't say we subtract from what we've got.
Years, I mean, I know that you mentioned the dollar amount that it takes to send, you know, a new officer, potential officer out for training. Uh, I know a few years back, or several years ago, we had that local academy here in Trinidad. And I think that's something that they may be looking at again, is that something that we could utilize if that was?
Man, it would be wonderful, and I did meet with the president right before Christmas, trying to make that happen. We met with Felix Lopez and myself and Captain Duran, and we went over advocating just to have that. Um, she was not open to the suggestion at this point, if we could get that back, that'd be wonderful. Not, not, not only if we have it in our backyard, but then I can have the local people who seem to stay here longer at my police department, the people that are born and raised here and wanna be here, going to the academy here, it makes it easier for them. Those that are not sponsored by, like, say, the police department. You know, at one time, I had people knocking down the door with, that were certified, trying to get a job. It's been ten years since that, it's, and it, it's not just Trinidad. If you go to the chief's conference, which I attended last, uh, last spring, um, it's across the board. We're all struggling, we're all trying to track that same good officer.
Uh, a couple more questions, one is that, and I know, you know, I've discussed this. You know, we hope that citizens will turn somebody in when they're doing something wrong. There are those citizens who see something, but they're reluctant to do so. But then there are citizens out there that are saying, you have to do something. But yet they're not willing to turn anybody in, and if they do, they're not willing to testify, to be good witnesses.
Right.
So it's a combination of everybody doing this thing together. And so they need to be able, if they're willing to report something, they, they, they need to understand that they may be called on as a witness, you know, to prosecute this person, so I think that's a, that's another major component that has to happen.
Well, and we do have our tips line, they can call in and honestly on the tips line, and I suggest they do that, at the very least. At least give us the information that maybe we can, you know, dig into and see what's there, so don't ignore it.
The last thing, and I've heard this recently, that, uh, to some degree, I take a little offense to it, not to the police department, but, you know, there's been saying that, uh, it's the locals that are creating a lot of the, uh, problems in town. Uh, I think that is probably incorrect because I think that we are seeing people, an influx of people that are probably doing some of the damage as well. What is your, what are your thoughts?
So I don't have a number on, you know, versus, citizen versus transient, what, what's happening. Um, we do have in, in the year in report, I wish that I had that tonight, the number of transit calls that we've had, and they've gone up, they've gone up considerably. So, but I can't attribute what crime picture is to, to that population.
So, and, and the reason why, because I just spoke that the citizens of this community, whether they're newcomers or the people that are here, they understand that there's a combination of the citizens that have been here, but the new citizens as well that are creating some of the crime problems.
Right.
So it's just not the locals.
So, so I think a lot of the negative has come from that article that the individual puts out for that SNAC thing. And, you know, um, his information is based right off of the information that I'm giving you. So he looks at Trinidad's crime picture and then he goes and looks at Lamar, I guarantee they didn't have sixty-eight crimes last year. Or, and, and I can't say how those other cities are reporting, I can just tell you how I report. I report everything, uh, because that's how my system is designed. Uh, I think, I think it's better to give a true picture versus, but it's gonna change in twenty twenty-one because they're gonna all be mandated and, uh, it's gonna be, they're gonna have to report all the crimes. It's just not, there's not gonna be people that can choose what they're, what they're reporting.
Those are all the questions I have, and I think what the council, but I wanna say thank you for the work that you do and the PD, the officers.
So I.
I know that you do the best that you possibly can and thank you for.
So I hope to get the crime, the full crime report to you folks, and if you wanna follow up, you can, after that, I'll come back and answer any questions in the work session there, because it's got a ton of information there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
All right, item four petitions or communications are all written, do we have any, when you're signed?
Yeah.
I do have, while that's being done, I do have one letter that I received. Uh, it's on the Public Health Radon Reduction Roadmap. Um, it says, "Congratulations in honor of National Radon Action Month. We are recognizing Trinidad, Colorado as a radon-aware community. The enclosed certificate acknowledges your adoption of the ICC International Residential Code Appendix, F-Radon Control Methods, which ensures all new single-family homes built in your community are constructed using radon-resistant new construction techniques. We hope you will promptly display this certificate recognizing Trinidad's efforts to protect residents by reducing radon levels and their associated lung cancer risks in newly built homes. In the near future, please consider taking the next step to protect more families from radon exposure by amending the R, RNC Building Code to include other types of new residential construction such as multifamily homes. Sincerely, Susan Anne Martino, Project Manager, Public Health Radon Reduction Roadmap, P H R, Project." Okay, other communications, Jay Gonzalez?
Mayor Rico, two times in the, two times in one day, I feel, feel special. Um, I spent, uh, I spent the morning, um, this morning at the, uh, at the county commissioners meeting. And, um, Mayor Rico was there and with my children were there as well because school was out. I still wanted to, uh, I still wanted to speak.
Did you stay afterwards to fix the, the, the?
No, no, I didn't get a chance to get that. So, uh, this morning, I, I apologize to the county commissioners and I owe you guys all a sincere apology as well. Since what I said here, um, two weeks ago, I really took a lot of initiative on myself and I've spoken to a lot of people from, uh, from county commissioners, um, to our district attorney, Henry Solano. Um, you know, and, and other, Bob Lucero and other people in the county. I spoke with Audger Garrett in length and I have really realized the burden that you guys have before you and that, um, the weight is, is very heavy on the entirety of not only the financial responsibility for Trinidad, um, forward looking towards the future, but the safety of the citizens as well. So I've, I've taken a lot of initiative on, on, on my own to, to, again, first, first apologize because I was hypercritical of every person on this up here as if you guys didn't wanna do anything. And really getting around and speaking with people, talking to those members of the county, um, and talking with Audger Garrett, I really get the sense that everybody wants to do something, they see it as well. And it's not just your responsibility, 'cause I asked you what you were going to do for, for us. And a phone call from a friend from the YouTube conversation where he says, "Jay, are you gonna be one of those people who just complain about it? What are you gonna do about it? How are you gonna activize yourself for your community?" And you know what, he was right, he was spot on. I was really asking you guys to come for a solution for us because I wasn't willing to step up. I am willing to step up. Since those last two weeks, I've gone and I went to the, um, Neighborhood Watch thing with a lot of my citizens and I see that there's a lot of people who wanna be part of the answer and they want to, to work together. On my way in here, I had a conversation with my neighbor, read an article about how lights, cameras really deter crime in the area. So for me to take upon myself, my own responsibility, to go and light up my entire building with lights that go down. with lights that go down strictly on the ground, trying not to create light pollution, but unfortunately, that's the reality of the society that we live in right now, is we need to put pressure on businesses like the Safeway that is next door in order to have them hire a full-time person. Currently, there's only, and I've spoken with the general manager of the, of Safeway. Currently, there's only two people on staff who actually have the ability to call the police, have them come in, and then issue, and, and say that, hey, listen, I don't want this person coming back here anymore. I'd like to trespass them from the area. They're not, they're, they're not doing anything at all. They're, they're just either being here, coming in here to steal. I'm not really sure if all of you are aware of it, but we pay a higher commodity price for our commodities down here as compared to Denver. We pay about eleven to nineteen percent of a higher rate down here, because we're farther away from, um, the, um, center of production area that delivers our food. So we have a natural spoiler already. We also have a problem to where nobody can say anything to those people. People can walk in and grab carts full of food and just walk out. That's a reality of stuff that's not getting reported, because by that, there's, there's no real chain through them to be able to do it. And two people who have that ability, the general manager and her assistant general manager, and those people are busy running that store, very shorthanded by them, I can tell you, because I see the amount of deployments that they have posted, the positions that they just can't. So they're shorthanded as well. We need to put pressure on those, those, and, and ask for a social responsibility from other business owners to really light up their stuff. Citizens, get together. Let's, let's, let's work together. You, you see a drug house, call out a drug house. That's, you see somebody doing something, call it out. Don't be passive anymore. And then when it comes time to, to go and you have to go to a judge and be like, hey, Judge, this is what I saw, do that. Because that's the only thing, that's the complete case that, from the police to the district attorney, the end of the day, there still has to be a witness that said that, I saw something, I saw it went down, I was there. That's the reason I called, 'cause somebody was in danger or something was happening. So we do have a great social responsibility for ourselves as well. So, um, I also, um, this morning I talked about our waterways.
Mr. Gonzalez, it's been five minutes, sir. I'm sorry. Give me one more minute.
Okay. I talked about our waterways, and I talked about people who were, um, living on the, the waterways and, uh, defecating on the side. That water goes, um, into the Purgatory River. I have a farm out in Honi that I grow CBD medicine, uh, for my child. Mary Nichols grows vegetables. You know, the, the, the Garbo waters is housed with them. If we have a chance of that, an E. coli outbreak could happen, because raw waste is going in to our river and those areas. That's a serious problem. You look at Rocky Ford, very, most recently in history, and that, those people went to prison. They didn't, they didn't, they didn't get slapped with the fine, we give you a big fine, those people went to prison. A generational family farm was lost to E. Coli. I'm not sure the, the, how the cold case went down, but as a citizen of Trinidad, and this is what I mirrored for the county as well, and my discussion is that we owe it to the tourism's who are coming in here that we do not allow two hundred and fifty feet from that river to protect the wildlife. This city council has given Child Unlimited money before to help stop that river. We've been, Howard Lackey's been working for years. I think it's important for the public safety that, that we put that restriction out there to protect our tourism, to protect our waterways, and make sure that people aren't just dumping hypodermic needles over there. And if we can light everything up down there as well, which grants are available for that, um, that would really help out a lot.
Thank you for your, you know, what you're trying to do, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Your passion is appreciated in this matter.
Um, and just so everybody knows here, I have an event that I'm, I'm gonna be putting on, on, uh, on Sunday at four o'clock. If anybody, uh, wants to come, and, uh, this isn't going to be a, a gripe session for anybody who's going to be there. This is gonna be more of, uh, the citizens who are getting together to talk about what we can do to move forward, um, as a community. So the, the, the invitation is open to everyone, and it'll be right in the building that's right behind us, right next to the box.
Thank you. Michelle Roberts?
This is the first time I've ever done anything like this, and I'm a little nervous, and I'm a little ashamed, to be honest. I moved to Trinidad in oh eight. I bought my house in oh nine. And I was proud to be here. And I've watched so much crime. I live atop a chestnut. There are four single women and an elderly man that live on that street. I've watched vagrants come down a hill, watched them come down carrying their bucket of chicken wire and, and wood stakes. What are they growing up there? That they have to fence off from the wildlife to keep it from eating. I've watched them do it. I've told them to move on. I have no issue with our police department. I love our police department, I think they should be paid better. That's where I want my tax money to go. I want my tax money to go to a needle exchange. I don't want my tax money to go to cater to the people that are causing the issues. A lot of these homeless are local, I get that. A lot of are transients. You drive down Commercial Street, you see Texas, Oklahoma, Alaska, New York, on these license plates. They're here for pot. A general out of her private pot, I don't care, I don't do it, but I don't care if you do. But just mind the law, you know? Don't come in here and create a bunch of problems and try and change this town. I have to sleep with my lights off. We used to be a dark-skY town, where you could sit outside and look at the stars. Can't do that anymore. And that sucks. Where's my tax dollars going? From my rights. That's what I wanna know. If we have sucky DA, that needs to change. You know, we need to get them out of there. Vote them out. Am I ashamed that I haven't done this before? You damn right I am. Am I gonna do it again? Probably so. I'll apologize now. 'Cause I don't like what I see this town becoming. I moved over here from Ratton. Y'all know the kind of problems Ratton's have. I lived there for ten years. I've been here since oh eight. It makes me so sad. I've been harassed at Walmart by people wanting money, and then followed me around, calling me names, because I wouldn't give them in. I wa- I've watched them abuse their pets. How the hell can they have pets when they pay even afford themselves? I don't understand it. And I don't understand why our police department's not paid. I've called them at two thirty in the morning, 'cause my neighbor won't shut her dogs up, and they are Johnny on the spot. I've pressed charges on her twice. She gets a fine, she's, and the next night her dogs are barking. Minor stuff, I get it, but when you can't sleep, how minor is it? I've met them out at the shop where I work, in the industrial park, at two thirty in the morning, 'cause our alarms are going off. Y'all know what kind of crime we had back there for a while. I have no bribes on our police department. Every one of them needs a raise. We need more of them. We need foot patrols in our parks. I don't even walk in our parks anymore, because you go there and you get harassed. And you won't go there and wa- I have two little chihuahuas, I walk them. I carry poop bags, because I follow the law and pick up the poop. If I don't get caught, I'm gonna get fined. What about these homeless people? They don't clean much after their dogs, they don't even clean after themselves. So there's, there's something not right here. Something is fundamentally not right with the way this is being run. I don't have all the answers, I don't have any answers. All I know is I want my town back. I want it back to where it was, peaceful, quiet, I could walk the streets at four o'clock in the morning. I could ride my bicycle at five thirty in the morning and not be scared. The only thing I worried about was a bear. Give me a bear any day. And I'm gonna stop now, because I'm getting too emotional, but that's what I'm here for tonight, is to, to let you know how I feel, and I'm not the only one. Everybody I know feels the same way.
And I'll just make it one response for council as a whole, is as you can see, we are trying to do something about all these issues and.
And I, and I, it's been an eye-opener, it has been an eye-opener.
It's a concern that we, as council people, uh, go to bed with that night, trying to figure out how in the heck do we solve this, if we can do so.
So what can, what can we do?
Yeah, like I said, we're, these are some, some things that are coming up that we are going to be working on, and just like, uh, Jay was saying, that there's that, uh, meeting on Sunday, attend that.
And that, that's great, I'm, I'm a, I'm a proponent for neighborhood life. I hate the fact that you have to light up the city to do it. You know? And we ought to be able to change.
But we are going to try to, we are going to try to take some steps to see if we can mitigate some of these issues.
So how can we, as citizens, get involved with y'all and help this get done?
At this point in time, I can't give you that answer, because we're limited to what we can answer, you know, from the days right now, so. But those answers will be coming, I'll let you know that.
Ma'am, this segment of the meeting is to hear citizens' concerns and complaints, and council is not supposed to be engaging and responding to every person that comes forward. And we will, we don't mean to not address your concerns, but that's the policy, is that they hear people now, and then we will talk about that and answer the question. So please understand that.
No, fair enough, it's a learning experience.
Sure.
So, yeah, fair enough, I get.
Thank you for your concern.
And thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Howard Lackey?
Long time no see, do you guys miss me?
Sure.
Well, really.
I really. At least you're honest there, Russell. Well, I'm glad to be here in front of you. I've got a couple real interesting things to, uh, tell you all, and also some observations that might help us with some of our dilemmas here. I'd like to pass this around. I get it to work. This is one of our newest, uh, residents in town, and, uh, don't let your.
The guy with the beard, the guy with the beard is.
Yeah, no, the guy, wait, don't let your kids wade in the river these days, you may, may have a jaws issue. One of the things that I'd like to commend the city, and a lot of you know that we've been working on this thing for about fourteen years. I think Les was one of the first guys down there in the river. And we've made a lot of strides thus far, and that is some of the result right there. That was a, uh, wildlife survey. We had Parks Wildlife and the guy, our consultant, that's working with more habitat improvement along the river projects. Uh, this is where some of the results that we found, and we found tremendous, uh, fixed populations all up and down the river, from Petressil west of town, all the way down to three fifty one sixty. And, uh, we had an article in the Chronicle here a couple weeks ago, kind of explaining what's going on there. And so the city can be very proud. And one of the things, as listening to all this tonight, everybody says, well, what can we do? And I, I think the best thing anybody could do is not sit on their thumbs and not complain, but get out there and actually be involved. Part of what's going on right now about the crime and the transients and all the other things is that if we sit there and let it happen, then it's gonna happen. You know, we're the vacation spot on the dark web right now for a lot of these folks. We've gotta change that. We don't have to be mean, but we just don't have to be accommodating. And we're a city, we're way too accommodating right now. I've got Charlie on speed dial, 'cause every time I see a new camper shows up down along the river, something's going on, he gets a call. And they get down there, get it taken care of. The sanitary issues that we have to look at on that river are extremely important. This river system is the last intact watershed in the state of Colorado on a major river. That means there's no water taken in, no water taken out. What falls down into Calabres is what goes into the Arkansas down along that, uh, Los Angeles. That's something we can be very, very proud of as a community. And what that done is given us some notoriety, so that we are now in the position to receive funds to do a lot of development. I worked with our operation, the BWP, which the city is part of, because the city has to maintain a, uh, clear waterway through town as part of the, uh, agreement with the Corps of Engineer for flood control and that type of thing. That's, that's what costs a little bit of money, but we can get money back with this little, this big guy right here, is because we now are becoming an important recreational facility. And part of our issue with the transients and, and the people that hang out down at the river, and Phil, I've done kind of an impromptu survey, and half of the people that are causing problems on the river are locals, because they are, come from loose ends, they don't have a lot of family structure, they have drug problems, they have drinking problems. And what better place than to go down and party on the river? Hell, if I was in that situation, I'd do it. You know, for years Boulevard was a dump zone and a party zone. So we have created something that people wanna enjoy. Not everybody looks at it the way we do, but, you know, we just need to make sure everybody is responsible. And to be a responsible individual, you don't throw that piece of paper on the ground. You don't take a dump out in the woods. You don't do any of the things that all of us, when we were growing up, if we did that, then we got our butts kicked. So this is one of the things that you all, if you see something down there, just give the police a call, they'll be there. Or say something to them. Don't, you know, one of the things about these folks that hang out down there, there's a lot of bluff, but there's not much stuff. You go up and you confront them, nine times out of ten, they're gonna back down. And so I understand why people would feel unsafe about walking down there, but at the same time, if you walk down with confidence, and you've got a couple friends, and you say, hey, you know, that's not it, you call them to task, they're gonna move. And one of the things the city has to understand is that if we make this a little more unfriendly as far as these folks that are just hanging out here, because they don't have to spend any money to live here. They go to the soup kitchen, they dumpster dive at Safeway, they panhandle, they buy their booze or whatever else, and they're down there partying on the river. It's not as bad as it used to be. Phil's been on a couple of these deals, when we cleaned camps out of the Boulevard that were just unbelievable. Dump truck full of stuff, loads of stuff. One of the guys who cleaned out from under the Young Street Bridge. I've never seen anything like that in my life. And those are getting fewer and fewer. But unless we stay on top of it, it will come back, because we are a nice place to live. That's why we all live here. So why wouldn't somebody that doesn't have anything to their name or wants to live that way, which is their choice? But we cannot let them determine and ruin what we have built here. So this is something that all of us have to take on as a project. That you see something, say something, call them out, because that's the only way it's really gonna change. You don't have enough room to put them in the jail. You don't have enough, we have no mental health facilities whatsoever. Okay.
Sorry.
So, no, that's, it's okay, I'm just about doing my spiel, but then I'm gonna advertise Moose's, so that's another thing. So anyway, you know, I'll, I'll get off the soapbox here, but all it takes is everybody here understands what we've got, and to make sure that we protect it, because nobody else is, we have to do that. And as a recreational, recreation, outdoor recreation, it's gonna be our new industry, and a very important industry. We gotta make sure that everybody that comes down here from Bug Scuffle, Texas, or Denver, Colorado, has a great experience here and says, you know, that's a neat place, I'll give them a go back. Thank you very much. Thank you, Howard.
On item five, consent agenda approval. I may approve of the regular meeting minutes of January the twenty-first, twenty twenty. Approval of the bills for one million forty thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. Approval of the payroll, January the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, to February the seventh, twenty twenty, uh, for three hundred seventy-six thousand five hundred sixteen dollars and fifty-one cents. Could I have a motion, please?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
Call a vote?
Just a comment on the minutes. I wasn't here, but, um, I noticed as I read through them, my name is misspelled. After the first time in, in the minutes is correct, and then it goes to Olga Tree, which, I'm not actually Swedish, so.
I had one addition, if I may, as of, to the, um, minutes. I, I didn't, uh, wasn't captured, um, last week in, in Jay's, uh, address to council. I, I asked him about the specific impact that, the issues he had, um, had on his business, uh, concerning basic business operation, and he, um, went on to express that, that impact was pretty extensive. I just wanted that noted in there if possible.
Okay. So with the first and the second, and the amendments to that, is the name correction and the impact that you're talking about. Call a vote, please?
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Mateen?
Yes.
Olga Tree? Abstainest of five A, because I wasn't here, um, and find B and C, yes. Shil?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item six, public hearings. Six A, consideration of ordinance amending the definition of applicant. To align the requirement for vetting applicants with those of the marijuana enforcement division pursuant to HB nineteen dash ten ninety. Hearing is now open. Les, can you give us a little background?
Well, Mayor and council members, thank you. This was the subject of a work session meeting, and then of course we had first reading, I believe that was two weeks ago. And now we're here for the, the second reading. So what this is doing is it is getting the local law in compliance with state law. It is making it so that there can be publicly traded and small ownership interests in marijuana concerns. And then also that people are only vetted if they have an ownership percentage over ten percent. So I hope that makes sense. And I know that Councilman Ogletray, you had a question before, and then last time when it came up on first reading, I was saying, I, I hope your question was answered because I don't feel like I did a very good job of doing that at the work session meeting. So I'm sorry about that. And if you have any questions now, please feel free to ask.
No, I studied, I went and looked at the HB nineteen ten ninety, and I looked at our ordinance and it seemed to make sense to me.
Good, good.
Any questions from council?
Yes, sir.
None? Okay. Anyone in the audience to speak for or against the consideration of the ordinance amending the definition of applicant? Any votes? Six A one, second reading for consideration of an ordinance amending the definition of applicant to align the requirement for vetting applicants with those of the marijuana enforcement division pursuant to HB nineteen dash ten ninety. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call vote, please.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Olga Tree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
We have no unfinished business, which is item seven. On item eight, miscellaneous business. Consideration of appointments to the City of Trinidad Tourism Board. We have three people, Amanda Lutral, she's here, Camilla Campbell, and Scott Zetus. Good. I have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on these applicants?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, there was a fourth person listed, but that person wasn't vetted. Did she not comply with the rest of the procedure? Do you know, the board only takes five people. Oh, so she was an extra. She was an extra.
Anybody expect the best on it? Any other questions?
Yeah, but another which the three there are.
So you'll help the board?
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Thank you for, you know, participating in the tourism part, so. Call vote, please.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Olga Tree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item eight B. Who comprises the tourism board?
These three.
The H three and Si and Tom Chris. Tom Chris. Item eight B, consideration of appointment to the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission. Recomending Joyce Miller, who is not here tonight, and I got a message from Audra that she was not here tonight because of weather concerns for her. I'm not sure where she lives. But that was her reason for not showing up tonight. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call vote, please.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Olga Tree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item C, consideration of reappointments to the Parks and Recreation Advisor Commission. Joyce Miller, Linda Lambden, I think she's here, correct? Yeah. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on these appointments? Call vote, please.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Olga Tree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
I'm line counsel report. Mr. Matei.
Nothing to report to.
I went to the Historic Main Street Board meeting last week and advised the board that I needed help working to table any discussion on the mills until after council decides what to do. And also they are starting a project with HD TV. There's a, like a, an award program where you highlight a part of your community downtown. This is commercial property. You highlight some buildings that need to be, some TLC, let me put it that way. It's too easy. It's the best way to put it, and see if HD TV will come in and help renovate those one or two buildings. So with Mr. Wallace, they are going to start that process.
The only thing I have is I went to the tree board meeting, but we don't have any enough people enough. We only have two people. We need another one. So I was telling the members there, I knew a guy and I'm trying to talk him into getting there so we can have a regular meetings. But they're still meeting, but not as the forums. But we'll work on that.
I wanted to say thank you to the community for all the condolences I got for the loss of my dad. Very hard. I, um, being in a small town is, is one of the great things about it is that you, you made friends who were dear and who, who reach out. It really helps. So I appreciate that. In the meantime, I tried to stay up with what was going on. I brought my cap, my computer. I watched the SIRS training. I have a witness to that.
That's right.
Um, that we did on Monday. And, uh, and I also, uh, tomorrow we're gonna be going to the Space to Create Oversight Board. And we have a lot of good things that that board's working on in terms of moving that project along. So I'm excited about that. And then Friday I'll be at the board meeting for the partnership for Detroit Community. And, and basically what that is, it's a joint effort between the county and the city and some local, um, social organizations like Health Solutions and others who are working to educate, prevent, treat substance abuse, and put forward some positive alternatives for people in the community to use. So that's an exciting thing and wouldn't it work that?
Jeez, I got a lot. We've been busy. So I know part of this you'll probably hit on also, Phil, because we attended the, up in Denver, the testifying for the funds for the parks, but also with meetings with Action Twenty Two. And also, Vince Peggy and y'all are here. I don't have the information with me on the Polar Plunge. Do you have a flyer with you by chance? I can add on that also?
If they're posted here, I can come in.
All right. So those that haven't heard, the Polar Plunge is happening out of Trinidad Lake State Park this year on the twenty ninth. So I believe it's seventy-five dollars per team or per person?
Per adult.
Seventy-five dollars per adult. So I'm putting together some veterans. We're looking at either some Star Spangled Banner wrestling tights, or we've also got some little blowups and little rubber duckies in with armed things that we're gonna put together a group and we're gonna run and jump in this year. So that's gonna be a blast. So while we were in Denver at Action Twenty Two, one of the things I attended was some information on the census coming up. And the numbers that I heard were pretty alarming to how few a people, the highest county in Colorado without particip-, uh, nonparticipation was seventy-one percent. That number just blew me away. Los Anamos County had forty-five percent that did not respond to the census. The amount of money this relates to is staggering, how much this county is losing. And I'm hoping the word can get out and we can have better participation this year. It's critical for funding for our schools and everything. Colorado ranks number two for U.S. vacation destinations, only second to Hawaii. For every dollar invested in tourism to Colorado, every dollar, one dollar equals four hundred and seventy-nine dollar return on investment. That was an amazing number for me also to hear. And then we're ranking number two is a great thing. Let's see. So we did meet with Heidi Williams. She's, uh, leading the opioid task force. I was telling Charlie earlier, they do have a, um, legislation going through now for scholarships for peace officers also. It's gonna be a state funded deal for rural Colorado. I'm working with Debbie Wagner, and I'd like her to keep an eye on that. I think that's something that could be very beneficial to all of rural Colorado and especially here in Trinidad. There was talk about the wolves being reintroduced in Colorado, compensation, how this will look. It looks like it's gonna wind up being a ballot issue for the people to decide. I know there's a lot of controversy on that. We have next year, and we've started, me and Phil also attended this meeting, uh, for the two-hundredth year anniversary for the Santa Fe Trail. A lot of planning coming up on that, a lot of neat stuff. Everyone's gonna be hearing more about this, get everybody involved. Um, I encourage everyone to get out there and participate in this. We're starting planning now for next year's celebration from when it starts in Missouri with dates to when it'll finish in Santa Fe. And along the whole trail, I think it's gonna be amazing. While we were in Denver also, we had an opportunity to have breakfast with, and I spent some time with our new, um, House of Representatives that replaced, uh, Kimmy Lewis. His name is Richard Holtorff. And I guess made an impression. He sent me a card I'd like to share. And he put, "It was nice to have breakfast, breakfast with us, um, the other morning. I look forward to working with Trinidad City Council at the Fisher Peak State Park Project." I think he's gonna be a great asset in the House of Representatives. He's behind us, um, a whole bunch on, and supporting us on the funding, uh, bill that's going through. And I think that's all I got.
I yield my time to the councilman bill.
Can't get by that easy.
Just a couple things. I appreciate the passion we saw tonight from citizens and the obvious devotion to, um, his job of Chief Corioso. It's just, it's good to be part of that and be here. And also I just, um, really like to remind, um, or inquire as to the availability of the, the date of the, um, work session that we mentioned, uh, specific to, it'd just be really great to energize the, um, the momentum we have here to keep going forward to address the issues that were talked about. So just, um, looking forward to that so I can notify people that I'm in contact with a lot of people. I'm looking forward to that work session. Just that is a reminder. And, um.
Is it that one? We gotta hand out on the future work session.
Is it on that one?
Okay. I think that's the twenty-fifth public safety. Is that gonna be the one? Yeah.
Yeah.
So you should have this in your paperwork somewhere.
That's it? That's it, Catherine. Uh, like I said, you know, like Mr. Goodall said, attended the Action Twenty Two meeting. And we, uh, there were two issues that we brought up, and he brought up one of them, and that was the opioid issue. And of course, the one that I brought up was, um, how do we try to mitigate some of the crime issues and what can we do to mitigate crime issues? So that's something that we will have a discussion on going forward, continuing with the Attorney General's office, uh, so we did that. We also met with the, um, Danae Asgard, who is the chairperson of the Joint Budget Committee. And the reason for a meeting with her was to talk to her about trying to get reinstated our fund, to get reinstate our funding for the Lockham Center. As everybody knows, a few years ago, we lost our, what is it, sixty-five thousand dollars of funding that we used to receive, and we lost that for other reasons. Uh, but we've talked to her about trying to maybe, I don't know if she was gonna try to get some money this year, or she was going to actually talk to Kathy Ritter, who is the director of the Tourism Board or Tourism Group in Denver. Uh, so we'll see. They, they always say money is tight, which, you know, they're always, it always is a shortage of money, no matter what you talk about. So that was a good conversation to have with her. And like I said, we also met, like I said, Rusty hit on the breakfast that we had with Congressman Holtorff and Senator Crowder. And, um, you know, he promises that he will try to come down and, um, be more progressive with Trinidad, uh, as far as support. And of course, you know, Senator Crowder has always been a good legislator for us. So I've recommended him to, for his help that we've, that he's given us here in Trinidad. At the same time, that same day, I testified, uh, in front of the Agriculture and Natural Resources Committee for the, uh, for some of the money for Fisher's Peak. And that's ten million dollars, and I think everybody's read about that. And ten million dollars is going to be split up between, um, six million dollars for other areas for maintenance. Four millions, about four million of those dollars is going to be directed for infrastructure at Fisher's Peak. And just to let you know, today, and I listened to it, I'm not sure, did you listen to that, Mike?
I was taking a light on it.
Okay, I listened to that, and it passed through Finance Committee with five to two. And so that was good to hear. Now it goes on to the Appropriations Bill, which might be done Tuesday. And then after that, it will go into, I'm not sure if it has to go to the Senate and then back to the House. So I've been in contact with Debbie on that and gave her some additional information. Uh, because one of the questions that, uh, that came, that came up that Doug Bilsec did not have was how it would impact, how Fisher's Peak would impact Trinidad. Doug did not have that. So I immediately called Doug Bilsec back and I gave that information to Debbie. Because the, on the low end, there's, they're talking about fifty thousand tourists, uh, to the tune of about three point eight million dollars that would impact the local economy here. So that was interesting. The other thing they hit on was the, um, Senator Gonzalez, who is the chairperson of that committee. She was asking about Amtrak and how that, how would it affect Amtrak? And I, uh, mentioned to Debbie and to Doug to go back and tell Senator Gonzalez that I'm on the committee. And that is something that we're trying to continue to keep that, uh, the Amtrak coming through Trinidad. And it's necessary to try to, you know, keep that running through here. Uh, also, the other, uh, aspect that came up, or the other question that came up was the, um, they were concerned about the loss of money that they were, because they were saying they were taking many, ten million dollars out of roads and education. So I also mentioned to Doug to go back and tell them that, uh, there's a educational component that's going to be attached to Fisher's Peak. So that's something else that they'll have in their pockets when they get to the appropriations as well as the Senate and the House when it comes up. I attended the Southwest Chief meeting, and just to let you know, I had to get a little testy at that meeting. Uh, we have hired a company to come in and do some work for the committee. And the last two meetings that, uh, they have, that they have brought up some information that they're bringing forward to us, they show a map. And they show a map from Fort Collins coming down to Pablo. Where in heck is Trinidad? Where in heck is Walsenburg? So, uh, the guy was up there and he was saying, "Well, I wanna talk about the Front Range." And I asked him, I said, "Define Front Range." And he looked and he looked at the map. And I said, "To me, the Front Range starts at the Wyoming border, comes all the way down to the New Mexico border." And I said, "So I take offense to what this map, Sean, I'd like to have that, uh, map redesigned." So we'll see if that happens. But I also had support on that from Clay Hart, Sal Pace, Pete Rickshouser. Rick Klein. Rick Klein was there and one other person. So I had support on that in that regard. So just to let you know that, uh, that's the reason why I'm there. Because to be able to say, you know, we need to be recognized for what we're trying to do. to say, you know, we need to be recognized, uh, for what we're trying to do down here. The Front Range does not stop at Pablo Colorado Springs. By the way, uh, the Chairperson also chimed in on that too, as Joe gave here. Uh, last Thursday, I gave a presentation to Colorado Preservation, Inc. on saving places in, you know, uh, we have been taken off of the saved places, but we are now being called in progress, which is actually a good thing. Shows that we're making advancements with what we're doing in our downtown area. And, uh, I gave probably about a 10, 10-minute presentation and I was able to tie in, um, not only what we're doing downtown, but also the Fisher's Peak thing, 'cause, uh, one of the ladies that was working on the savings places, uh, Ms., Ms. Blair, she came up to me, she says, "Our, um, guest, our regular speaker is not able to make it 'cause she's tied up at the Capitol. So, could you take a few extra minutes?" So, I took a few extra minutes to tie in the Fisher's Peak deal with it. So, tied them all in together and I got a good response, uh, from the people that were there, had several people ask me questions afterwards. Uh, like I said, I also attended that meeting, that Santa Fe Trail, uh, 200-year anniversary. And there were two people there that came up from Albuquerque. And that was kinda neat that, there were probably what, 25, 30 people there yesterday?
At least the room was overflowing. And the group of students from the college in the, yeah.
Okay. Um, last thing I wanna mention and remind everybody that the, uh, State of the City Address will be Tuesday night or Thursday night, 6:00 PM at the Pioneer Room. Uh, so, if you plan to be there, I appreciate it. Okay?
You might have to say it real quick. While we were up there and, and testifying, I think it's important to point out with continued working with county commissioners, we had all three county commissioners travel to Denver that day to testify along with Mayor Rico in front of the committee. And I think that's worth mentioning, that continued work between the city and the county, um, is a great thing.
Oh, yeah, and to, to add to that, that night that we were at the Governor's Mansion, I talked to a couple of people and I, when I see people from out of town, I'll ask, "What kind of collaboration do you guys have between the city and the county?" And I always get this, you know, deer in the headlights thing. And I tell them, I tell them, "Well, you know, that's something that we're fortunate." So, we're really fortunate that we have a good working relationship with our county commissioners. And I really believe that me sitting there with the county commissioners testifying had a big impact to the committee that we're testifying to. So, it was great. Mike?
Wow. You want me to follow them though? (laughter) Um, after seating places, there's a tentative work session scheduled, um, for February 24th, we have public safety. A lot of important issues and, and, you know, a lot to talk about, so they're backing up. And we packed, uh, February 10th, the Monday evening, a little bit. Parks and its, uh, Rec Advisory Committee wanted to give an update and we've scheduled this for a long time. The land use code, which has been sitting out there, uh, we're gonna bring that forward and we're gonna have, uh, our consultant here, Carrie McCool, and, uh, bring three new council members on board with it and, and kinda go through where we're at and what she's done. And, and she'll, she'll have a presentation for that.
Did you ever get us a red line on...
Uh, you know, Mayor, it's, it's hard to get a red line on, because what she did was take our old code where, you know, it applies here, but then you gotta look over here for this and then look over here for this. She's consolidated it, uh, moved things in, so it's, it's a better use. But she will, uh, she will bring something that, that kinda lays that out for you.
We won't have it ahead of time?
Uh, it is on the drive. It's been put on the drive.
That's the one that you set a non-length upgrade?
Yeah. And I think Audra, did you put it on again?
Yeah, you already have a work session open.
Right.
The package's done.
Yeah. Uh, and then of course, uh, pretty good discussion on, uh, fourth quarter marijuana and outside agency funding and, uh, board funding. And just one council's direction on how we move forward with all that. So, that's a, that's a packed work session. And then...
Five o'clock before 4:00, but then...
It's 5:00 if, uh, council would like to, uh, because it's a, it's a pretty good, three pretty good topics, uh, if you...
Any thoughts from council on the timeframe, 5:00, 4:00?
4:00, I can do 4:00. 4:00.
Where's it from? 4:30? 4:30?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll be late.
Okay. And just to kinda tie in with what, uh, Councilman Goodall and Mayor said, uh, we met Heidi Williams. She's the Director of Opioid Strategy. And she's, she's reached out to me already. Uh, she's on the ground trying to get things squared away, but she wants to come down in front of you, so, um, she's reached out already.
Who should be on the con, who's all on the conference call Friday?
Uh, I think it's just, uh, Vanessa Deveraux from that office. I'm not sure if she will be there. Um, and then, just a reminder that, uh, I think Audra has got this to you, the annual legislative workshop with CML. If you wanna go, that's February 13th. There's, uh, registration and, uh, and everything that's required. If you would like to go, please let either Audra or Brittany know, we can set up arrangements for you.
The main conference is in July, the CML?
June.
Yeah. June this year?
I think so.
That's the one I wish to go to. It's much more informative and I enjoyed that much better from attending it in the past.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's all I have.
Just to everybody know, you know, that's why that, it's very important that we as a council can try to reach out to our legislators by going up to Denver periodically for these events whenever we can. Because, um, put the space with them to us and us to them. And, uh, some of these things that are coming around, like this thing on Friday, is something that you can, it, it's a huge impact.
It is.
That we can make, just like the testifying. It's a huge impact. And, uh, that's how we continue to be recognized as, as part of Colorado.
And I like having my mug there, 'cause it's hard for them to forget me though.
But I really wanna say thank you for going. I know you wanted to go, but you couldn't go for other reasons. And Mike, thank you for being there. That was the first time around, Mike. We had, it was the first time we've been here, but, uh, thank you for, uh, joining, so I appreciate that. So, okay. Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I wanted to comment on the, the Sam Light Circe training. And I know that two of you couldn't go, but I, I thought it was a wonderful training, having, uh, sat through several of those now over the years. That was the first one that was done by, by, uh, Sam, and I thought it was very good. Um, you know, Tammy Tenoy has done those historically and, and, uh, anyway, I, I just thought that Sam's was very good. And I was a witness to Councilwoman Ogle Tree watching the Circe training. She was on the elliptical machine today at the chair. I sure was plugged in and ready to go and was there for a long time.
That's dedication, you know?
So, I know, I know. And she said, "Watch what I'm about to watch, because you're a witness to, to that." And, uh, but anyway, I, and I hope that you both who were not able to be there, I mean, and, and I know you were doing that, you'll be able to, to watch that on, uh, on Tom's channel. Um, the only other thing I wanted to say, and I was just to correct one thing that was mentioned tonight, and that was, one of the people who came up during, um, the communications, oral and written, suggested that there were, uh, there was a disparaging remark made about Henry Solano. Like somebody said, "Like if Solano was worthless or something, we need to do something." And I, I hope that wasn't a takeaway from anything I said. Um, and I don't need to heap praise upon our current DA, but I do think he's doing a tremendous job and, and, uh, I didn't want anyone to think that I was being critical of him in anything that I said. So, uh, but with that having been said, I, I, I have another matter that I wanna address with council, but I, I think that can wait until the next meeting. So, I'm hoping for...
You gotta wait?
Do it! Well, do you want me to do it now?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, um, I would ask, I, I'm going to ask, and this is a suggestion, uh, for, for you to consider, but I'm going to ask, and I didn't wanna do it tonight, because there was a lot of information that was, that was imparted, but I'm going to ask council to consider the possibility of doing away with council reports. And I know that, and, and also city manager and city attorney reports. And I wanna say, I think there were a number of reasons why I, I asked this. First of all, this was something that Tom Maker brought in when he was, he was city manager. Not to say that Tom Maker didn't have good ideas, he certainly did, but, but this is something that he brought in, um, when he was, um, the city manager. I will say that it feels sometimes like participation is a little compulsory and that, um, you know, people have to say, "Well, yeah, I did this," or, or "I don't have anything to report on." And so, it feels like people are, are kind of, um, there's a sense of obligation to have things to report on. And, and I, I just think that that is, that is somewhat unfortunate in terms of that. One of the things I, I wanna say, you should absolutely have a forum if you, if you adopt this. You need to have a time during the meeting where you can address concerns that were raised by citizens at the prior meeting. And I think the time to do that now, if you consider this, would be policy items in staff reports. And you could have a time when council was, um, speaking directly to that. Also, announcements that you have, council, or, you know, meetings that you've attended, things that you have done, I think there would be a way that we could get that information, um, to the public in, in terms of these things. And also, if there's anything important that you wanna impart to the community during the meeting, you could do that as well. One of the things I, I'm gonna say, and this is I guess my last point, it is very, it is time-consuming and, um, and difficult for staff. Now, I know right now I'm droning on and on, but everything that is said during council reports, um, has to be memorialized, uh, by staff. It then becomes part of the minutes for everybody to look at, but it, it's just kind of, um, resource-intensive. And I would just say that what is, the, the benefit that is realized may be outweighed by the time it takes, the, the notion that people are going to have to, um, have something to report on that they might not otherwise wanna have to report on. And, and I just think that it may have outlived its usefulness. I may be the only one here that thinks that, but I would just ask you to please consider the notion of doing away with council reports.
I'll, I'll answer that from my perspective. Um, I feel that it's useful. And the reason for that is one of the things that we get, get on, especially during election time, is where's the transparency? And, uh, it's a time to allow the citizens to come and listen to some of the things that we have been doing. And it's a transparent, uh, transparency thing for, you know, for me especially. Um, and I think, and if, and if somebody doesn't have something to report, you know, that's fine. I don't have any issues with that and I don't think, uh, the public would have any issues with that. So, I, I just feel like it's, uh, it's important that the public knows that council is working not only tonight, but at other times during that two-week period before we have the regular meetings. So, that, that's my reason why I, I kinda feel, and I'm not sure what other council members think about that, Mr. Matane.
I think Les makes a good point about the, um, incumbents of time and effort to document things that are maybe not that consequential. However, I also am quick to add that sometimes the agenda can be very limiting and we are able to discuss those things that are listed. And I think there are some things that are more at the risk of creating chaos. Need to be spontaneous and need to be said, even though they're not an agenda item. And I just would hope, to your point, sir, that there be some sort of a mechanism available for consideration of those non-agenda discussions that necessarily need to happen. And I believe in a public setting, so we address the issue of transparency and that. But perhaps it doesn't need to be regimented and structured to the extent that it requires documentation and unnecessary incumbents of time.
And then, just like the Anfield employees, if any of this was done during the work sessions, it doesn't have to be recorded. It doesn't have to be. So, I, and I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, you didn't.
Okay.
I sometimes feel that, you know, I question why we do those council reports, especially those of us that are on boards and commissions that aren't really that active. I would say maybe a better vehicle to do that would be, once a month, have each one of us give our report on our board and make it a regular agenda item instead of every council meeting. Um, you'll, you know, Rusty and Mayor have extra information tonight about the Action 22, uh, programs that they were involved in, but I, I, I question their value. I really do.
No, I agree with you, yes. I, I've been on council before and, uh, I think the best thing for that is, of course, time-consuming and stuff. And a lot of times, it's repetitive. Anthony will make a statement and then, not to criticize anybody, but Carol will say basically the same thing that Anthony said. I'll say, "Yeah, I agree with you." And it gets to be really silly. Uh, one statement, and, and I think it could be worked out where we can bring out stuff, uh, in a meeting that's real important. But I, I pretty much agree with you on that.
I know, I don't agree, um, but I'm new to all this. But when I was sitting out there, that was one of the things that I learned a great deal about how the city functioned was by how the, uh, city councilmen talked about what they were doing. And it's how the community is aware of what the boards and commissions that they liaise to are doing. Um, and there's a lot that we rely on our boards and commissions to do, and there's no real other reporting mechanism that I'm aware of about that. So, um, I think if we use discipline in the way that we discuss things, I think that would, would take care of that.
So, you're saying if we did this at a work session instead of a city council meeting, it wouldn't have to be, we don't have the minutes to deal with and everything else?
Yes, sir.
So, we could transition this, we still have two meetings a month, work session, we could do the same thing?
Yes.
And relieve the burden on staff?
Yes. That makes sense.
That would not bother me one bit, and we would still have the avenue to set up here and tell people what the hell we're doing.
Right.
That's important to me, to let the people know. And I think it's important that they know, that, you know, we don't show up twice a month and, um, hammer out this, approve some bills and do this. I think it's important to let people know where we're out there and what we're doing and what the boards and commissions and everything else are doing. I think it's important.
Uh, to Mayor, with those points, we, I, if we did it, uh, two times a month, it limited to the work sessions, it, it would, uh, save a lot of effort. And also, being that, um, it's broadcast on, um, YouTube, I mean, it's, it still meets your level of transparency, which is positive. And in some way, you know, even though it's on internet, it's still been memorialized for people's future viewing.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I think that might be a good time to do it, is during the work session. And, uh, I think that, uh, please put it on.
Good.
Okay. That was convincing.
That's right.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, uh, on to item 11, Executive Session. For discussion of personnel matter under CRS, Section 24-6, or 2, 2F, and not involved in any specific areas where requested discussion of the matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official. The appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of any elected official or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personally to protect their employees slash senior manager position. Motion to go into Executive Session.
So, move.
Second.
Second.
Any questions or turns? Call both please.
Dedal?
Yes.
Grega?
Yes.
Ogultr?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
O'Anson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Mayor, you're not gonna.
Sure.
You're not gonna come here, are you?
No votes, no nothing?
No votes.
We'll let everybody come out and do it right here.